Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, April 9th, and the time is 6:37 PM, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. First on our agenda is the consent agenda. First is minutes from March 26th. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, any questions or comments for those?
Nope.
Hearing none, I will take the motion.
Make a motion to accept school committee minutes, March 26, 2024.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is warrants 60 and 61, which are going around for signature. Questions or comments on the warrants? All right, hearing none, can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve warrants 60 and 61.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is visitors' comments. Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee must sign in with the administrative assistant prior to the opening of the regular session of the school committee. The visitor will identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. For anyone unable to sign in ahead of time, we ask that you clearly state your name and address so that this information can be included in the record of the meeting. And we have no visitors. Cole, you're up.
Thank you. I hope you're all doing well. I don't have a ton more to say from the last two weeks that I met you last at East Meadow. Of course, it's the last week before April break, so everybody's wrapping up with MCAS and other tests. MCAS, of course, grades three, four, and five, three, four, five, and six are either getting ready to take it or are taking it currently. I was told that it is going to be Dino Night on the 13th. This is a program to help promote ELA in math within the community of the younger kids. It will also provide a reading space for kids wishing to develop those skills.
I'm just gonna hop in, just, it's the 11th.
The 11th, I apologize.
Nope, no problem.
The 11th of Dino Night. Over at the high school, start of the spring sports seasons, games started this past week. The Cradles for Krantz program I mentioned two weeks ago also finished off the other day. I was told that went very successfully. It's the end of the third quarter, start of the fourth. School tentatively ends on June 14th now, as we know because of that last snow day last week. MCAS is also in swing over at the high school. Seventh grade is taking it this week. And the high school is still building schedules for next year. For student leadership and representation, I was told Cory and David of the senior class went to Boston with Mrs. Romano for a student government day. I was told they also wore suits there, actually. So I'm, it was a good time. School culture and environment, Spirit Week this week, Hawaiian Day Monday, Twin Tuesday, anything but a backpack Wednesday. I'm sure you can, I got a couple ideas. And we're finishing up with pajam Friday. There will be a field trip to Sunny's for the seventh and eighth graders and a field trip to Brownstone for the ninth graders coming soon. On May 10th, and, excuse me, on May 9th, there will be a good decision and positive action meeting for prom, of course, to keep students safe on the afterpart, used to make good decisions, not be stupid. April 29th, there will be a digital skill assembly for all grades for community engagement. There was, of course, the volleyball tournament for autism acceptance. There were seven teams, a teacher team, two student teams with a medal prize. A lot of people showed out for that. We had a good turnout with that. The pathways program was also ran around the same time and gained a lot of money. They're making more money every year, so that's going very successfully. As for future plans and goals, of course, teachers and staff are still working on student schedules. The final touch-ups on sign-ups and course selections are going on right now. The Selah survey will be released April 29th for the final one of the year. And in the newsletter, I was told by Ms. Jordan, this is important, there was a summer programming for pre-college opportunity that all students should be notified about as it has opportunity for volunteer work and internships that might help them for the fields they want to go into for college. Pretty much all I got.
When is prom?
Prom's gonna be May 10th this year. It's at the barn at Hampshire College. It's gonna be from 6:00 to 10:00. They're selling tickets now currently at lunch. Emily and Ray have been out there doing that for the past couple of days. I bought mine. Tried to get that out of the way. Give them a customer, give them first customer.
Sure, they appreciate you buying ahead. I know prom tickets often go last minute. Much like it's in tickets.
Well, I'm the one planning next year's too, and I am quickly understanding that it's a lot of that. So I appreciate all the effort that they put in for us, especially because, you know, the senior class does it for the junior class usually every year. So I appreciate that, I really do.
Okay.
Any other questions for Cole? You're doing great, Cole. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thanks, Cole. See you tomorrow.
Short and sweet. Okay, um, here's the big one. Voting on the FY25 budget.
So you should have in your folder...
FY24 budget.
FY25.
Motion language FY24 budget.
Oh, that just might be the title, then it changed. I'll double check.
It's in there, it's a 507.
Oh, I see it.
Motion language.
So is it in there? Sorry, it wasn't at the right spot.
And there's also FY25 budget summary sheet in there. It's just that kind of main landing sheet that we've used in the past. And this shows us closing the gap as of last week. We had a gap still of about $80,000. And, you know, I think we've been pretty consistent in saying that it's, we are seeing FY25 is going to be a tight budget, but I think Todd and the leadership team and the budget and finance subcommittee have worked to try to minimize the impact. I want to be clear, that's not saying there won't be an impact. I went back and watched some of last year's meeting at this time, and we had talked about making about $700,000 in cuts last year, and we're around the same number this year. So that is back-to-back years of pretty significant reductions. We've been fortunate, fortunate to minimize the impact on staffing to an extent, but there are places, we've talked about throughout this, music being one, where we haven't been able to build things back into the budget that weren't in, that were eliminated from last year's or this current year's budget. So, you know, we've said all along that our budget is built on projections, and things change, and sometimes those things work in our advantage, and sometimes they work against us. But this is a balanced budget that we're asking you to vote on, the total amount of our full operating budget. We're anticipating being $12,015,508, but the ask of the town is $9,847,099.
Questions and comments on this? First, my comment is, I just want you guys to know how much I appreciate all the work that you've done on this, because it's been a daunting task, for sure. So I really appreciate all the work that you guys have, have done for that, because we're here without, I mean, $700,000 of cuts is awful, but it's not as awful as it could be. We're, you know, districts surrounding us are announcing huge layoffs and things, so job well done.
Thank you, and I think we're unfortunately, in some ways, taking a one-year-at-a-time approach, always looking ahead, but also understanding that some of the things that we're doing to get through also kind of push things down the road a year with the hopes of maybe some changes to financial formulas or other areas that we could benefit from, so.
One question is if the governor does something and there's more, more money somehow for chapter 70 or whatever, would, how would that work as far as the town's concerned? And secondly, if there's more money coming in, does that mean we can add some stuff back?
I think we have two options. So as far as the town's concerned, one of the places that I would try to do things in this that go hand-in-hand is maintain as much as I can in our revolving, because right now we're offsetting quite a bit of our budget with particularly school choice revolving, and that's, that's got its own cliff. And so if the per pupil goes from 30 to 60, and, and we see another 19, just like $20,000, that's, there's not a lot we can build back with that. We're not gonna be able to rebuild a music program or something like that. And so that's a place where keeping that in revolving gives us some flexibility. Not a lot, again, it's not a program builder, but it's that unanticipated expense that we can cover rather than going to the town for reserve transfer. You know, I think the only thing we've talked about that could potentially bring meaningful change to our budget would be funding schools at that recommended 60 million, which, given the projections and where everybody's talking about with revenue, I don't foresee the legislature going to that level of funding. But that would be the place where then we could really start to look at, what are we building while still maintaining some reserves?
I think, I don't know that it's a phrase that I coined, but I said to Todd at one point last week, I, there's always some risks in the, like, but I think we've been conservative about the risks that we've tried to take and say, like, okay, if this happens, might we have a cushion somewhere else. And so we've tried to be thoughtful about all those places and not zeroing out accounts and, like, going through everything in a revolving account. So we've tried to be thoughtful both about short term and long term and the impact of all these decisions that we're having. You know, I, I think there's some things that either are not in this budget, were removed from the budget, or we weren't able to build back in that people continue to feel. But I also think we've been creative in some of our problem solving that has minimized the impact in some areas that we could see further, could have seen further reductions.
Any other questions on the budget? Are we ready to make the motion? The, the language is in the folder on that sheet that they put in there for us.
Sure, I'll make a motion. Make a motion to approve the proposed FY25 Granby Public Schools operating budget of $9,847,099 to submit to the town of Granby in preparation for the annual town meeting.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next is continued business. First read, policy IHBC for dual enrollment.
So I know this is the policy that George and I looked at last meeting. And what we discussed then was essentially going with a policy that allowed for the procedures to be implemented by the superintendent and building staff. So...
My apologies.
So what, what I would note, because I know this has been on the agenda in terms of the dual enrollment conversations and different things like that, and it is just a shorter policy, that if people were open to it, I don't know if we need a second read, or if we wanted to potentially waive that option.
I think we can, but it doesn't have vote on the agenda, so I think we would have to take a vote to add it as a vote. Is that correct, or should we just table it to the next meeting?
I think if you're okay with it, you could take a vote to make a vote, and we can always throw it on the next meeting, just to, again, it's not gonna have a huge impact on the immediate. There's no action that will be taken, although guidance counselors could let those students, as they're figuring out their cast, class schedules, know that they have some more flexibility. So that's the one thing. But I think if we're feeling like that's gonna be supportive, then we can communicate that to guidance as well now, so.
Well, and I know Cole mentioned that they're working on the schedules and all of those pieces, so I would think sooner rather than later would be helpful.
Yep.
But if...
I'm, I'm fine with it, just, so I would need a motion to add it on as a vote.
I'll make a motion to add it on as a vote.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any additional discussion on the policy as it stands?
The grades earned in the college coursework won't be calculated into the high school GPA.
That's correct.
But they will receive the credit towards their diploma.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and typically, college admissions offices will run their own calculation based on courses, students taking their transcript, which just doesn't get calculated into the school's GPA because it's not a course offered through the school.
So the biggest thing is those kids that take full advantage, I'll say, of the dual enrollment, lose a chance at a higher rank overall because they're not, their GPA is not being calculated with those courses. So they're not taking high school courses. So an AP class has a higher weight than, like, an honors class or a traditional class. And so if there's someone that's taking a ton of AP classes and someone else is taking a bunch of dual enrollment classes, and everything else was equal, the AP student will have the higher overall GPA per class rank.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay. Which is fine, because I think in the long run, those that are taking the dual enrollment are seeing the benefits, because AP is going down this weird, weird thing where a lot of schools are not even, even if you test at a three or a four, not giving you credit, so.
Yeah, so that's one of the things that the work group that we've worked with this past year around this specifically, we've talked a lot about, because there's not a standardized approach to accepting AP classes. The approach to accepting dual enrollment classes is more standardized. It doesn't mean it's gonna, a Hoya Community College course is gonna be accepted at every school across the country, but many schools have an equivalency chart to say, if you took this course here, it would count for this course in our institution, where AP is a little bit more all over the place.
And if your AP class is in your major, they're going to make you take the class again regardless, even if you've got a five on the exam, because they want you to learn their curriculum, how they teach it, and it builds, because it builds from there, so everyone's starting at the same place at the same time.
Yep, and you're in the same cohort likely of a group of students who would be going through that path.
All right, with, if there's no other discussion, I'll take the motion to vote accepting policy IHBC.
I'll make the motion to accept policy IHBC.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Nice job, you guys, that was a, it's a good one. Okay, superintendent's search. So we have in our folder a list of people that are interested in being on the committee. And Jill, if you could, where was that other one? Was it just in the folder?
It was in the previous...
Previous meeting?
No, in the previous search. It's the superintendent's search committee list.
Okay.
If that helps.
Yeah, I just wanna look at, have them side by side. So the list that we have, we have it open. The list that we have, we have quite a bit of interest from East Meadow. At least two of the members I see are also GEA members. And then we do have some interest from the high school, and again, I believe, is Mr. Racing, um, no? Okay. So the two GEA members would be also teachers at East Meadow, I would have guessed, then. All right, so someone, I'm just talking in circles here. So we, what we need to have is, what we did last time is, we had one school administrator, two district administrators, two school committee members, but with the composition of our committee now, I suggest that that is just one committee member, because other, otherwise you would be quorum in that meeting with really with the way that it is right now. So I'm gonna write this down. School administrator. And then... District admin.
You said two district admin.
Yeah, I think one school administrator, two district admin.
I'll just take...
Okay. One school committee member. Um, GEA member. One or two for that. We had one last time, but I don't know that we're, we have to be exact, so I'm just curious thoughts.
Just match with last time.
Okay, so one. The only change I'm making to that is, again, the school committee.
So we're still at, potentially, the, you know, 13, 14 member, which I think is a...
How many parents?
All right, so parents for East Meadow, we had, we had two from each school, right?
And then essentially, it was two staff from each of the buildings.
In addition to the GEA member?
And then I think the intention was to have two community members, but we ended up with one last time, all said and done.
I didn't see that person listed.
I'm gonna just keep scrolling.
Oh, it went to the next page?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So the community member last time, was that person still on a board?
Yes.
So, um, okay. So we have...
We have 15, by that count.
Yeah. I have 14.
There's 14, unless you do two community members, and then there's 15.
Yeah, I think 14 is...
So I had one school committed, one school administrator.
Yep.
Two district administrators.
Yep.
One school committee member.
Yep.
One GEA member. Two East Meadow parents. Two junior, senior high school parents. Two East Meadow staff. Two junior, senior high school staff. Two community members.
We can try for that. So 15, 15 person committee. So...
And then I think if you potentially start with that committee and do the selection process, if there's people that aren't chosen, they can be alternates too, because sometimes after that first meeting or so, people can't commit or things come up.
Yeah. So we need, and of this, one, we'll have a chair. You had an executive board last time, sort of, right? Like a chair and a co-chair or vice chair, or did you just have one? And then I felt like there was a few of you that were...
Yeah, I think it could have been, I think when we were in the selection group committee, we had somebody like doing secretary stuff, like all of those pieces to cover.
So we can't, um... We can't pick the date, right? Because we need to have the... The committee. But I do see Todd's name on there as someone from central office. So I'm, my vote is for that. And then maybe you could help start to organize, getting some people. I don't know if we want to go through and pick all of these people, or invite them and kind of run through and see if people are, send an email if people drop off once they see what the expectation is. I'm just not sure, like, I don't wanna wheedle it down and pick from this and then have people say, I can't meet the commitment of, you know...
I think if you're able to identify at least the school committee member, a district administrator, or district administrators, and a school administrator, then I think maybe that group could connect in the next couple of days.
Okay.
Again, I think personally, and I don't know how others feel, I think the posting's open until next Friday right now, the 19th. So if the committee could kind of be in place by the end of this week, then as soon as that closes, you could start screening, identify a group for interviews, and then I would say at that point, it's really the committee, how many people the committee would like to see recommended for interviews.
Looking at this, I'm, I'm thinking that as a committee, a community member, we could have Officer Gilli and Rick, although he will be, his position ends at the end of May, at the same time as Jill's, but we're trying to have it done before then, so he could act in that role. He's also a parent, so he would be duly added as well.
I feel like when it came to sta, you would probably remember too, staff and parents, that they were chosen at random after being grouped together. So it was just like, if there were four interested parents from East Meadow, then they pulled two names. If there were four interested from the junior, senior high school, they pulled four.
I was gonna ask, is there more of a random way?
Correct.
You select from the pool.
Right, well, I'm just looking at that they're the only two people that are community members in the way that we used it last time. So that's how I'm looking at it, but I, you know, I'm totally, that's where I'm, I'm stuck, because I don't know if we say, all right, Todd and maybe Ally and Lisa are representatives, we've got then a district and one person from each school, have them sort of be like the chairing committee to get this together so that they can do random, or if we pick a few people off of this list? That's where, that's where I'm sort of star-stepping, because last time, we didn't, we didn't, as the school committee, go through and pick the names out of the hat.
So I think if we get our school committee member, and I can go forward with the process in terms, and work with the school committee member in terms of getting the rest of the committee selected in whatever random fashion, like you said, there are a couple of people who wear multiple hats in here, can kind of reach out and say, do you, how would you like, would you like, prefer to identify yourself as the staff member or as the GEA liaison? And that might help.
Sure.
Care it down, or at least target some people.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I'll just acknowledge, I think in a short period of time, 27 community members, staff members, administrators reached out to be a part of this. So I think acknowledging, like, just appreciative that their willingness to step up for this, and also hope that they recognize that we also have some constraints that we have to adhere to, and it's, I think that's why, it's good that you guys are kind of talking about a, a random selection process for some of those places where we have more people than we have slots. And I think it's not that people's opinions aren't valued or anything like that.
Oh, I hope I didn't...
It's just, we just, no, 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 nobody, I don't think, has indicated that, just, like, we have to have a manageable number.
Absolutely. So, um, so for the school committee member, I think I've said it before, but last time they... it before, but last time, they, when I was chair, they asked me to step down, because I would become the tiebreak vote, if, when we go, go through and are voting on the finalists, that I can't be in all of the initial workings, so it's between the two of you and George, um, who wants to be on the search committee.
I'll let you say your piece first.
I was gonna make a joke that we should just...
George?
He's not...
He's volatile.
Yeah, I know.
I just, I do worry, um, with George's work, um, commitments, if he, you know, but the meetings might be at different times, so it might be totally, um, totally fine. So, again, I, you know, I don't...
We have to run two of these, right? So this is the initial one, and then we have to do a other one?
The, so this, yes, yes and yes?
You want to do the initial, and then I'll do the follow-on one? And that way we don't have to flip a coin.
Well, she won't be here until...
Oh, that's right.
So by default.
That would still work.
She's like, that still works for me.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, and if George wants to, yeah, shift anything, I'll let him know he has that opportunity, I can't imagine he would...
Yeah. So, I've got Todd and Jill for sure, and the two of you will kind of take it and move forward.
Yep.
Are we okay with this? Are you okay with this?
Mm-hmm.
And then, if we need to make adjustments, we can do that.
Okay.
Once the, once we have the members, if we need to make adjustments, let's make sure that we do that.
Okay.
Okay? Are we good with that? You're good with that?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Jill.
Mm-hmm.
I know it's going to be a daunting, uh, daunting task. Anything else that we need to talk about for that?
Um, I guess, it probably doesn't have to be talked about tonight, but if there were to be a number that the committee would want to see identified as finalist, but I think that could be discussed the twenty-third as well, because the posting closes the nineteenth, I don't think they'll have screened and interviewed by the twenty-third, so, um, I think that's just something that the committee's gonna have to make a decision on, if not tonight, at our next meeting.
Well, what do you guys think about going into that? Would it be better to know as you're setting up, um, with the committee to know what, I don't know that it makes a difference for us at this point, either way, it's just an arbitrary number that we're...
So I think it, in a lot of ways, it makes sense to at least think about moving forward three to four candidates, because you don't know if somebody, like before those finalists are announced, are going to kind of pull out.
Mm-hmm.
And I think three would be ideal, to kind of interview as the, in the full.
And we had someone last time withdraw, right before being named as a finalist, so I, um, I like the three to four.
You could say no more than four, no more than five, so you have a cap at least.
For me, no more than, no more than four would be ideal.
I'm perfectly comfortable with that, because I think that that, um, gives us a good, um, a good pool to work with, and it gives us room if anybody has to pull out, because it seems like a lot of times they're applying for other positions as well, so, um, are you good with that?
Yeah.
Do we, is that a vote, a vote vote? I don't think it needs to be, does it?
So...
Okay, so no more than four candidates, um, that sounds, sounds good, uh, good to me. Alright. Enrollment Dashboard.
This is also one that's probably pretty easy tonight, it's, I don't know how this keeps happening, but it's three in and three out, and we remained at seven twelve. One in and out was from pre-K, one in and out was from K, and then we had one out from eleven, nope, one out from seventh and one in from eleventh. So, it's a new enrollment in pre-K, a new enrollment who relocated to town in K, a new enrollment who transferred in from a private school in grade eleven, and then the withdrawal was a pre-K and a K moved, transferred, because they relocated out of state, and then a grade seven that transferred, um, or school choice out. And that left us at seven twelve total, for our, I think, fourth, third or fourth month in a row, fourth month in a row.
Well...
It's the first time that's happened.
It's nice to see, even though there's some changes that were overall, um, staying fairly steady. Any questions on the dashboard? Okay.
So just one thing, kind of connected to that, that's floating out there, we didn't talk about K, um, school choice, when we talked about school choice. We have talked about it internally, it's still, I think, there's some volatility to it, we're like thirty-five or thirty-six, so I don't know, I just want, if anyone's watching, it's not that we've forgotten about it, I just don't know that there, right now, is action to be taken at it, on it, because we do typically get some enrollment over the summer at that age, so, um, to open up school choice now might end up making that class size bigger than we typically hope, so, just wanted to make sure we mention that.
Okay, Superintendent's Report.
Again, always good to have our student rep back, not just to have the student voice, but because they take some of the things that I always plan to mention for Superintendent's Report, but want to emphasize East Meadow's Dino Night, it's a math and literacy night, is this Thursday, April eleventh, from five to seven here at East Meadow. Reminder to folks that it is spring break next week, so April fifteenth through nineteenth, schools are closed, I know that there is an, um, attendance at Acceleration Academy happening at the junior, senior high school, so if students have questions, they can talk to Ms. Jordan or Mr. Rodriguez, um, and schools will reopen on Monday, April twenty-second. We are in position to have our statement of interest to the MSBA submitted by this Friday's deadline, we, um, I think have our final signatures, and that should be submitted, uh, by the end of the day tomorrow. And MSBA will also be on campus next week, um, it's actually not the MSBA, it's their, um, contractor for the recommissioning at East Meadow, they had their initial walkthrough here at the, um, at East Meadow last week, and they're coming to run tests while students and staff are in session, so that they can get some of the classroom data, um, and things like that worked out without, um, being interrupted, and also want to announce that, um, last week Governor Healy made the announcement that there, um, of new innovation career pathways, and Granby was designated their, uh, to have their first innovation career pathway, starting next year in information technology, um, and it's anticipated that that designation will come with opportunities for additional funding and support the development of that program, so we have a meeting tomorrow afternoon, a new designee meeting tomorrow afternoon to learn a little bit more about next steps, but really excited about that, there was a team of people at the junior, senior high school who put a lot of time and work into that, um, to get that designation, and happy to have it, and look forward to seeing it getting up and running.
Excellent. Thank you. Todd?
Uh, so the main focus was obviously getting the budget to you, um, so we crossed that hurdle, um, the kitchen project, so the, um, one of the companies that we're working with, they're sending their electrical engineer out tomorrow to do their inspections, we've had our ventilation inspection by them, they're building their, um, proposals, get us ready for the bid process, and so now the electrical side is coming in tomorrow, so we're looking to move that project along.
Excellent.
That's all that I have.
Alright, Jill?
So CES met, um, March twenty-seventh, um, they discussed their rates in terms of some programming with the Mont Tom, Mount Tom and Heck Academy tuition rates, um, there was a review of funds as part of the budget portion, um, the executive director gave the report, because it's also their fiftieth anniversary year, so they're doing special events, um, and then we reviewed the evaluation for the executive director, which was all very positive.
Excellent. Anything else for any of those? Um, I just have one thing that I just wanted to mention on a sad note, um, we lost Mrs. Still, who taught in the district for thirty-five years, she was a kindergartner, kindergarten teacher, first grade and fourth grade teacher, um, and she was also very instrumental with, um, friends at the Bramley Public Library, and so we just want to pass along our condolences to the Still family. Um, okay, for our next meeting on April twenty-third, um, Stephen, I think we need to work on your evaluation, we need to get that finished up before, I'd like to get that done before May, um, because I really want you to be a part of that.
So will you, will you present then?
Yeah, so I'll present on the twenty-third, and then our next meeting would be May seventh.
So we have enough time to, we'll have those two weeks to be able to put in our inputs.
And so I'll do the same, normally it's cop, like hard copies of the proposed goals with the evaluations.
I think we gave everyone their individual electronic copies already?
Already?
Before the mid-cycle, so people could take ones and keep them, so everyone should have that, if they had a question, we can certainly reach out to you, Jackie.
Um, next meeting should be, um, work group meetings, I think, right? Um, at, do, will we need to do any more budget, probably?
It'll be worth having it on the agenda.
Oh, that was upset.
We just, I don't know if we'll have more information about the date of town meeting or anything like that, and, um, the one pager, and things like that, so...
And then, um, do you have more policy stuff that you want to do?
Yeah, we had, if we can go back to...
Yeah, the other one that we passed by, um, alright, anything else that we can think of right now for, um, next time?
I think so, I think some of what has been community relations could be handled in budget in that one, because...
And I think both of us are on both now, so we can kind of have it be budgeting community relations. How to get people out for the vote, and, you know, um, we did have some people come this time, which was nice.
Yep.
So, we're, we're getting there. Alright, if there's nothing else, um, we'll vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, Part A Three, to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining, as doing so in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee, the committee will not return to open session. Can you do roll call vote, please?
Mr. Girl?
Aye.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everybody, have a good night.